Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh five. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, are you on?
Yes.
Pitching the indication, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you. We give you the glory and the honor. We give you the praise. And Father God, we love you for you love us first. And Father, I just ask that you would forgive us all discord and any type of offense, Father God, that we may have presented, Father God, even as a city, Father God. And we ask for your great favor, as you've always favored the city of Glen Arden. And we ask that you continue to open doors that need to be opened and that you will close them that need to be closed. And Father God, we just thank you and we glorify you and we put you first. And so we ask, Lord, that you would be in the midst of this meeting, Father, that you would bless us and give us wise counsel in the name of Jesus, Father, and that you would just bless us to go through this agenda with order and peace and that you would give us wise counsel. Bless the citizens of Glen Arden, bless those that affiliated with Glen Arden, in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Farid.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President.
Here.
Our president accounted for.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. President.
There are two people, Councilman Herring.
Yes, I would like to add the PSLA construction request to topics of discussion and the police facility to topics of discussion.
PSLA and Police Department.
Thank you. That's it.
Uh, Councilman Farid.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I would like to add to topics of discussion, um, the traffic at Woodmore Town Center and also the data center.
Data center. Okay. Any other discussion? I have one. Um, so we're going to table the ordinance for the right-of-way permitting because we didn't hear back from, um, there's still work to be done on that, so we're going to pull that, uh, from this meeting. Uh, and the the resolution on the goal room, um, I would like to move that to its own separate meeting, uh, given the the rules and the lengthy discussion, uh, to move that into its own meeting. So those are the only two adjustments. Is there any other discussion?
Council President.
Uh, Council Clerk.
Does that include the discussion with regard to the community center as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council President.
Uh, Councilman Jones.
You mentioned that right-of-way. I didn't see anything on the, on the agenda for a right-of-way, uh, resolution.
It is in the topics of discussion.
Topics of discussion. Okay, alright. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, uh, any opposition to the amended agenda? Here none by unanimous consent, the agenda is adopted. Okay, first up on the agenda are the minutes from the, uh, meetings held in March, the work session held on March 4th, the public hearing held on March 12th, the regular session held on March 18th, and the additional public hearing held on March 21st. That is in your packet for review. And are there any questions, comments? Okay, will be voted on in the upcoming regular session. Okay. Next up is a presentation on elevator, uh, council chamber and nutrition center renderings, uh, by Ms. Tamika Felder. Ms. Felder, are you on the line?
I am here.
Okay. Uh, do you need to present?
I do.
Council President, I've given her share rights.
Okay. Yeah. Well, Ms. Felder, the floor is yours.
Okay, just give me one quick second. Just making sure the right file is up here. Okay, I am going to share my screen. Just make sure I have everything up here. Okay, just let me know when you can see my screen here.
We can see it.
Okay, so what I'm presenting today is, um, the elevator, the proposed new elevator and elevator lobby addition. Um, this will be, what, what you're seeing here is the first floor, the lower level, I should say, plan outside of the nutrition center entrance and the entrance most people take to come into the council chamber. So this is the, the existing parking lot on the side of the building. Uh, just to orient yourself, this, uh, where my, my mouse is, is the nutrition center entrance. And this is the entrance to the staircase that takes you outside and also to the council chambers. So what we're proposing to do is to build the new elevator shaft. That's what you see right here. Um, that will be on the outside of the wall where the mechan, the current mechanical room is. And then we're going to enclose um, this area outside, um, the, the entrance to the stairway in glass to create an elevator lobby. So the nutrition center, the, the nutrition center entrance will remain as is. But in order to get into the building where the staircase is and the council chambers is, you would have to go through this elevator lobby, this new lobby. And to access the elevator, we are going to take some space away from the existing mechanical room to extend the lobby over so that you can, when you walk into these doors, you'll either walk, uh, straight ahead to go into the main part of the building to take the stairs upstairs, or you return to the right. And then here's the door to the elevator that would take you to the second floor. Um, the existing stairs that are outside, the concrete steps that are outside right now, right now, they just go straight along this wall. Um, and then they empty out onto this open concrete area here. What we're going to do is reroute the stairs around the new, um, elevator lobby and it will connect back to the sidewalk here. So you would still have that exterior, um, access from the lower level to the upper level as well. Now, on the second floor, this, to orient yourself, this is the goal room. This is the, the main corridor that takes you to the staircase. This is the staircase that leads to the administrative offices. So what we're going to do right outside this, this exterior, um, this interior staircase, this is where the, um, shaft for the new elevator is going to go. Um, this is where the access to the elevator will take you on the second floor. So when you're on the lower level, it'll take you up to the upper level and the go, where the goal room and the administrative offices are. But the door to the elevator will be off of this main corridor that comes off the side of the goal room. So, um, we, I think before we had it where the elevator shaft kind of pushed over a little bit, but we extended it over, uh, to meet, you know, current codes and things like that. So this, this is, I know a lot of people can't really understand, um, 2D or really visualize what's going on. So we prepared a couple of renderings to show you. So this is the proposed new, um, elevator lobby. So again, to orient yourself, this is the side of the building here. This door here is the entrance to the nutrition center. And as you can see, this is the new glass, um, lobby that we are proposing. This brick structure that you see in the background, that is the new elevator shaft that's going to take you from the lower level to the upper level. So this is just another view so that you can see exactly what's going on here. Um, again, this is the, the main building and then you can see how the, the new elevator lobby, um, integrates into the architecture of the existing building. And we did that on purpose so that, um, it looks like it's been like that as part of the building the entire time. I have one more rendering here. This is the rendering from the other direction. So again, just kind of showing you how we are rerouting those existing concrete steps around the elevator tower, um, so that you can still have access on the exterior from the lower level to the upper level. So this is the view from that, from that side. So any questions on the, on the proposed elevator? Oh, just to let you know, with the elevator, the elevator company that we are specifying is Dyson Krupp. It is a, um, a traction elevator, um, is, is made for low-rise situations like what we have here. It's only going two stories. It's going to be a 3,500 pound elevator that moves at 150 feet per minute. So that means that it's not slow. It's, it's a, um, you know, a nice moving elevator that takes you from floor to floor. Um, one of the reasons why we decided to go with the 3,500 pound elevator is that not only is it ADA accessible where it can accommodate wheelchairs, um, you know, and a, a number of people getting into the elevator, but it also meets stretcher compliance. So if, um, if an ambulance, for example, needed to get a stretcher in the elevator and go from level to level, then it, it accommodates the, the size of a stretcher. And, um, the other good thing about the elevator that's selected is that it's machine roomless. So we don't have to have a separate machine room. All of the, the, um, parts of the elevator are contained within the elevator shaft itself. See, I have a question, Ms. Jones.
Um, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Ms. Felder, uh, this is a question I meant to, just thought about, really. Um, the new shaft that we're, that's going to be, uh, that's going to be built, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to be able to match the brick because I know sometimes when brick has been, uh, you've had the brick for a long time, uh, sometimes it's hard to match the brick that's, uh, existing.
Yeah, we're, we're going to try our best. Right now, we're trying to source the brick now. Um, the good thing about this brick is, it's one of the common colors. Um, I know it's, it's been there for a long time, but that's one of the things that we're going to look at to make sure that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
Alright, thank you.
Council President Matt.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Um, hello, Ms. Felder. Um, can we go back to the, uh, second floor rendering that you, that you showed us?
The rendering or the floor plan?
The floor plans.
Sure.
Second floor. Yeah. So a, a question. One thing, um, I think we need to look at, and I didn't see this when we looked at it before, but when they come out the elevator, they'll go to the right. I mean, they'll go to the left to go to the administrative offices, correct?
That's correct. They will go to the left to get to the administrative offices. But the thing with the administrative offices, um, I think right now you, you guys changed it where this is, is a controlled entrance into the administrative offices from this way. So I think this door has like a card reader on it now.
Right, right. And that's one of the things I was looking at because again, if they go to the right, then that means they can go all the way down the hallway and go into the goal room area. Is there any way we can get, uh, uh, some type of door put up? After, I guess, these two?
Oh, to, to control this entrance here?
Control that, yeah, control access to the rest of the building.
Gotcha, yes. Um, we, we can actually maybe put a door, um, here, like working off this column here. We should, we should be able to do that. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, I'd like to see something like that because I, I wouldn't want somebody to come in and then be in, be all around in the goal room, um, you know, have that much access to the building. Because right now we do have a, a control flow where people can only either go up to, can only go up the steps into the administrative offices versus going into the rest of the building.
Okay.
Because I know the other two goal room doors stay locked anyway. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely accommodate that. I don't see that as being a problem.
Alright, are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Felder, you can proceed.
Okay. Let me stop sharing for a second. And just give me one moment. Let me get the other file up here. All right, I'm going to share my screen again. And just let me know when you can see this.
We can see it.
Okay, so this is, um, the proposed renovations for the council chambers. So, uh, we've been working on that to try to see what we can do to, um, modernize the, 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 the council chambers and bring it up to, to today's, um, aesthetic values that we have. So what we're, what we're going to do is, um, this, uh, you can, this is a, a, a 3D model, just to kind of give you an idea of our thought process and, and where we're going with everything. So, uh, initially, we were going to try to see if we could reconfigure the space somewhat. But because of the number of, um, persons who need to sit around the, the table, then we needed to be able to accommodate that. So we decided to keep a similar shape of what you have, um, right now, um, in terms of the platform. But what we did was we extended it out so that it, it, everything is more integrated. So for instance, um, when you come, when you walk down this way, this is the, the main entrance into the, the council chambers. And of course, this door where my mouse is takes you back to where the restrooms and things are. But that, if you go behind this wall here, this wall will have a ramp that will ramp you up to the top of the platform. So right now, you all's platform height is like around eight inches high. This new platform would be 10 inches high. I didn't want to make a platform that was, that was too high where, because we're limited in space, then we only have so much space to be able to accommodate a ramp and also to accommodate stairs to be able to get up to the platform. And so this ramp is, is hidden in the back. You, you don't see it. You don't even know it's there unless you go around to the back. But it provides ADA access for the platform itself. Um, then we have the, the entire, um, podium or the platform, we're going to have a wall that's built up that will have like these wall panels, these wood wall panels that will go, um, around the entire platform. And then we're also mimicking the same look on the wall behind the platform as well. So you'll have this whole wood look, um, you know, for both the, the wall and also for the, the, the platform itself. Um, behind the platform, we would have a desk similar to what you have now. And then you have the individual chairs. We're working on, we'll be working on the AV requirements. So each desk will have a microphone and a monitor. We're going to do a lot of the newer, um, AV requirements because I understand that you guys have been having issues, um, you know, with your sound and things during your meetings. But we're going to take care of all of that, um, you know, with the, with the new design that we have. So again, there are 12 persons who can be accommodated up here on the platform. The, the council members, the city manager, um, the attorney, and I think there were two others as well, um, who would be able to be accommodated there. On this sidewall here, this, this is the existing doors to the mechanical room. We're going to definitely keep those. And then, um, and this is the door that leads to the staircase that takes you out to the exterior. So we're going to replace those doors and, and paint them to go with the new, um, decor that we have in the space. But on the walls behind are going to be acoustical panels to help with the sound. And this represents, um, a large, um, screen, display screen. So whenever you have to have presentations and things like that, then this will be the screen that, that will show up, that you will be able to, to display on. Um, and then also with the acoustical panels, the acoustical panels will also continue on the wall that separates the, um, council chambers from the nutrition center. And one thing that we wanted to do right now, you all have, um, like an accordion partition that separates the two. Um, we're going to get rid of the accordion partition and we're going to go with the sliding glass wall partition. So these doors actually, they split in the middle and they fold back to both walls. So that way, um, if you have to have overflow or you just want the space open, then you would be able to, um, you know, move those out the way and then use the nutrition center as overflow if needed. Um, also, we're going to, with this glass, you can customize it however you want. So I'm thinking that we would do a frosted glass so that when the doors are closed, then you can't see in it. But, but of course, when they're open, then, then you'll be able to, um, you know, see what's going on between space to space. But also by having the frosted glass, it kind of obscures your view if you have something going on in the nutrition center at the same time that something is going on at the council chambers. A, a big thing here is the materials. So right now, you guys have a lot of hard surfaces for sound to jump off of and reverberate off of. So instead of having like the hard floor that you have now, um, I would recommend us going back with carpet tiles, um, to be able to absorb some of that sound. And then also these acoustic panels on the wall are, is going to be able to help with, um, absorbing sound as well. The ceiling will also be redone. Um, so all the ceiling throughout this area and also the, the nutrition center will, um, it will have a new ceiling. So we're going to do a combination of the wood like you see here and, and two-by-two acoustical tile. Um, and, uh, right now you have two-by-four acoustical tile. And one of the advantages of the two-by-two, it not only does it help with the sound, but also you don't get the sagging that you get with those two-by-four tiles over time. So everything is going to look really refreshed, um, you know, when everything is done. So again, for the platform, um, you have, there's a ramp on this side. But on the opposite side across from where the mechanical room is, then you have stairs. I'm trying to get, so you can see it. You'll have stairs that will take you up to the platform. So you can go up one side and up the other. But at least you have the ADA accessibility to be able to get up the, the platform. One other thing that, um, that we're going to consider doing is, um, maybe doing where one of this panel here is hinged. So in case of an emergency, if, if, um, these, the people who are seated here need to like get out immediately, then they can just, um, you know, push this open to be able to step down, to be able to get out as opposed to having to walk around and back by where the ramp is. Um, another thing that we're going to do, I'm not showing it here now, but we're going to have, um, we're going to redo your seal. So your seal is going to be prominently displayed on this back wall so that when you have your, your presentations or in your broadcast of, of your meetings, of your public meetings, then it will clearly have, um, the city of Glen Arden displayed there. Um, another thing that we have are, we're going to do new seating, um, for the, the, um, people who come out to attend the meetings. And then also a podium as well that will have a microphone. So, um, if anyone is speaking or needs to present, then they'll have something where they'll be able to do that from as well. So that, that is, um, the, the current preliminary design, um, that we have for the nutrition center. Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, for the council chambers. For the nutrition center, we're still working on a few things, um, in terms of the kitchen. We're going to expand out the kitchen a little bit to make it more functional. We're going to redo all of the, um, the flooring, the ceiling, the lighting. We're going to redo all of that. And then also the existing AC units that are in the windows, we're going to take those out and replace those windows as well. And then back in the back area where the restrooms are, we are reconfiguring those restrooms to make them more ADA compliant. Um, right now, you, you have, uh, technically you have a stall that can be considered ADA compliant, but it's not a full five-by-five stall that you have today. So we're going to reconfigure the men's and the women's toilets to make them not only more functional, but also to make them up to the today's standards with ADA compliance. So that concludes my, my presentation for where we are at this point with the design.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members?
Council President, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Farid.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Felder. This looks really nice. Um, I just wanted to ask another question. You mentioned monitors, um, and microphones. Will there also be outlets?
Yes, yes. So there will be outlets. Um, you're talking about behind the, the, um, the desk area?
Yes, I teach, um, members. I'm sorry, did you hear me?
No, no.
So, sorry, I teach members.
Yes.
Will there be an individual monitor and an individual microphone and outlet?
Yes, there will be. So do you see this, this, um, wall that comes up that goes all the way around? On this wall at each seat, um, we're going to have an outlet and also a USB port as well. And then each individual station is going to have a monitor, um, so that you, you will be able to see, you know, what's going on.
Thank you. And also on the, um, I guess, I don't know if it's the, if it's the left, but it's to the right of the, um, sorry, to the left of the, where the members sit when we're facing the audience, where we have a TV screen now. Is that just going to be a TV screen? The rendering looks like it might be some sort of projector or built in to the wall.
Yeah, we're going, we're actually working that, that out now, um, in terms of what it's going to be. But it's going to be a larger, whatever it's going to be, it's going to be against that wall there. So it'd be wall-mounted, whatever it is. But we, but we haven't made a final determination as to if we're going to go projection or if it's just going to be, um, you know, like a LED monitor that's going to go up there.
Okay, and what about the lighting in the room?
So we're, we're working out the lighting now, um, the lighting scheme for here, but it's going to be completely redone. So like, so we're going with all LED lighting in here. So, and then you'll be able to, to control the lighting level as well because we'll put it on dimmers. But we're going to do something completely different with the ceiling.
Okay, thank you. And what about, um, I don't know if there are going to be any modifications or where, um, citizens would be able to give their comments? Is there going to be a new podium? How, how would that be set up?
Yeah, so this, you see this right here? This is the podium. You see it right here?
Is that in the center?
It's in the center, yes. So, so whoever needs to come up and speak, they can come up right here and speak. And they will be looking right at the, the center of like, I guess, the council president sits in the middle and then everybody else sits around. So they will be facing the, the seven council members.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Only question. I know it's, it's pretty early on in, uh, the process, uh, and I don't know if you have it, but is there a, you know, estimated timeline uh, for something like this to be completed?
Um, in terms of the construction?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm thinking the construction will probably take, I'm going to say maybe about three months. I'm going to say about three months for the construction, maybe four. But we'll know more, um, once, once we get into it a little bit more. I'm also going to, uh, put, assign some, um, construction numbers to it as well to see where we are with everything in terms of the budget.
Okay. Alright, and that was my next question. So you just answered it, the second one. So, we're good. Now, are there any other questions from council members? All right. And that was my next question. So you just answered it, the second one. So we're good. Now, are there any other questions from council members?
Council President?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell Ms. Feld, I just wanted to tell Ms. Felder, thank you so much. This looks beautiful, everything that you presented. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Council President, I do have a, sorry.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman G, uh Councilwoman Farid.
Thank you, Council President. I did have a question about, um, I know when we had met before about the gold room. We had talked about getting um an estimate for how much those renovations would cost. And I'm not sure if that information has been passed on and if Ms. Feld has had an opportunity to do that or where we are with that. But I didn't want her to leave, yeah.
Yes, yes, I have an answer for you. So we, I actually met um with a contractor um out there last week. And we did a walkthrough just to show, you know, exactly what the, what the scope of work would be. And so he's actually putting um a, a budget together for us now um so that we can have a starting point. To know where all of those, those renovations, where the cost of those renovations would be. So it'd be maybe about another week or two and he'll, he'll have it to me and then I'll um present it to you as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Well, Ms. Felder, thank you very much for all the work that you and your, your firm uh is doing for the city. I look forward to the additional components to this project as well as to uh the um. The project related to the goal room.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, have a good one.
You too.
Okay. Next up, uh the opposed legislations. Uh, first up is resolution to hire grant writer Eddie Tobias. Uh, open the floor um to first uh city manager Habita if she wants to present it. And then to the council if they have any questions or comments.
Uh, sure. You have the resolution um that was in your package. Um, and it is uh to uh have a former city manager, Mr. Eddie Tobias. Uh, serve as our grants manager. Uh, he was here from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. Um, some of the members who were on the previous council will remember him. Um, he is my understanding that he wrote a, a major grant that was responsible for all the trees. That were implanted up and down Glen Arden Parkway. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, floor's open to council members. Uh, Councilwoman G.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and thank you, City Manager Habita. Quick question. Um, if we're saying grant manager, are we saying that he will be managing the grant writer? Or is this intended for him to be the grant writer?
Uh, he will be the grant writer. And if we uh wanted him to take on project management of grants that have been awarded. Uh, that's a possibility, but right now it's, it's, the focus is on um drafting grant applications in particular.
Okay, I'm a little confused because on March thirteenth, there was correspondence. Um, between us as a council to the administration saying that we would revisit. Um, the current grant writer staying on. So I'm not sure if there was some correspondence that I missed between March thirteenth and today. As to how we have now moved to another grant writer with potential grant writer.
Okay, I, I was my understanding in my response to a council member that it was relayed. Uh, to council that it was not advisable to revisit that. Uh, and um that the request was, well, yeah, from uh council president. Uh, well, what is your, what is your next recommendation? And this is my, my recommendation.
Would you happen to, so again, just going back, you, you um city manager Habita, you stated that you had shared with. A council and council was to share back, a council member was to share back to us? Or are you saying that you shared it with council president and council president was to share it back to us?
No, it was shared back with, with every council member.
I don't see that correspondence. The correspondence that I see is dated March thirteenth. At eight twenty-three AM to which you responded from that, that conversation where we said that. Following up on a meeting that we will follow up on the decision to continue with said grant writer beyond that time. And that was on March thirteenth and your response to everybody on council was message received. So are you saying that there was a follow-up to that meet, to that?
Yes, yes, there was.
Okay. If you can share it with me so it could be at the top of my email, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this resolution gives me plenty of pause. Because if I remember correctly, when um. The, I'm not sure if it was this sitting council or the, the prior one had requested, someone had called and requested uh. And asked Mr. Tobias if he would be interested in being the city manager. And because of health challenges, he, he declined. So I'm wondering what happened between now and then. Uh, also, um, this is the reason that I brought up during charter review committee about the city manager. The city manager's position is a staff position and he is, he or she is to conduct the day-to-day operations of the city. And should be held accountable to the elected officials as it is stated in our charter. For, you know, for the elected officials not to oversee. Uh, what's going on with the city manager. Uh, that's, we're just shifting risks and responsibility. The other thing that I see at this, with this contract is it looks like the same contract that municipal grants submitted to us. Was this contract written uh or just copied from municipal grants? This is the contract that municipal grants sent us. The only thing that's changed in this contract is Mr. Tobias's name. And then there is uh also a typo that uh on page. In the compensation area, there's a typo. I'm not sure what that amount really is. That needs to be corrected. And also, I mean, s- excuse me?
I see it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have the floor. Thank you. Um, also, uh, I respect Mr. Tobias's work. He came to the city and he did what? And presented and uh the resources that he did and did what he did. And I appreciate his work. But I think uh at this time for Mr. Tobias or GS Proctor, their time in this city has passed. We are now trying to move forward with getting uh resources. When municipal grants came to the city last August. I've seen resources come to the city that we've never uh seen before. And I think that we, and if I'm not mistaken, there was a c- consensus taken. That four of us said that we wanted to move forward with Mr. uh, Mr. O'Connor and, and municipal grants uh among the council. So I'm not sure, as Councilwoman Guillaume stated, where all of this, how all of this came up. When this was not, as far as I'm concerned, the pleasure of the council. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman um Jones. Uh, Councilwoman Farid.
Thank you, Council President. I also am seeking clarification on the role of the grant manager, grant writer. And to whom that person reports. Um, I'm not sure if this is a, I, I don't believe that this is um. An employee role, but rather a contractor role. Um, so I'm not sure if. The contractor role is at the pleasure of the city manager, but rather at the pleasure of the city council. Um, and if that is the case, um, if the city council decides that we want to continue with. The previous grant writer because he's already um been in place and uh started on grants. And has a good sense of where we are, would that be the preferable route to go rather than um. Starting over with someone who may be very well qualified, but has not been uh privy to what has been happening. And the, the processes that are already, or rather the um grants that are potentially in flight at this point. So I'm really just trying to get an understanding of who the grant manager writer would report to. And therefore who has the authority over um their. Service to us, whether it be a contractor or an employee, but I think this is only a contractor role.
Thank you. Um. Did, did you wanna answer that uh city manager Habita?
Sure.
Um, about the reporting structure?
Sure, um, you know, I, it is a contractor, contractor um relationship with the city. And I think at one point the council, there's nothing in here that says who it uh, as I recall, that who the contractor reports to. But certainly, I wouldn't be averse to having the contractor and uh the independent contractor. Um, be uh, uh, you know, reporting to the council in terms of uh meeting the grants wishes that you want. Um, to go after.
So your opinion is that the grants writer report to the council?
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay, um, so I don't, I saw. Okay, so I'm gonna go in the order which I saw it. If Councilwoman Yon's hand is new, then I saw her first and I saw Herring and then I saw you, Councilwoman Jones. So Councilwoman Yon, did you have another comment?
I did. I just wanted to um say to uh city manager Habita that I did, as I referenced the email from March thirteenth. I did see an email from you that came afterwards on March twentieth, I believe. So just wanted to clarify that. I did see your email response on March nine, March twentieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harry?
I'll let Councilwoman Jones go first.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, uh, all right, we see where this is going. Okay, so in this contract that's written up for Mr. Tobias. It also says on a page, the contract manager and consultant point of contact is identified as Eddie L. Tobias. Whereas in the contract that was written for uh by municipal grants, they said the contract con, the contact, point of contact would be. Uh, Regis Bryant. So uh, I, I don't understand that. And, and to me also, this is clearly uh, 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 I look at this as cronyism. I'm sorry. For, to bring on Mr. Tobias, this is just cronyism. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Jones. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, let me say, um, I was actually on the council when Mr. Tobias came aboard as the city manager. And during that time, we never even paid for a grant writer because he wrote all the grants for the city. He wrote the grant for the um. Phase two of the um MLK Park as well as some other grants that we had uh received. Um, so I know he's, he, he, he's a very good grant writer, he is that, but it really, it really is kinda um. It brings into question a lot of things because again, now people are pointing out this stuff where. Mr. O'Connor was only reporting to the chief and he said that in an email, he only reports to the chief. Now it's concerned that. You know, he's, that he's reporting to, that the grant writer is gonna report to the city manager. And where was that concern before? When we were burning on what was going on, we didn't even know what grants were being written. And um, again, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I don't understand what cronyism comes in that. I mean, if you wanna think that, you can think that about Mr. O'Connor. You know, you can say cronyism is there. He's a police, he's a, he's a part-time police officer in Forest Heights. You know, you, 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 you could yell cronyism at that level. If you're gonna say that, you shouldn't be, don't have phrases like that if you don't know if it's true. I don't know whether it's true or whether it's not, you know. But if you're gonna throw phrases out there like that, it can be done in both ways. I think that again, we need somebody that's gonna uh, 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 work with the, work with the city council again. Majority of the grants that he, he got were for police. Um, the grants that he got, you know, I mean, there was no conversations held with us. Um, um, with us about um what we wanted as a council. Um, there was no concern about that. No one said anything about that until after this came up. He was rolling right along doing his police grants, police grants, after police grants. And then when, when the issues came up, now council members wanna come in at the tail and have all these questions about, you know, who you're reporting to, this and that and this and that. Again, I just think that, um, and then, and then we got advice from the attorney also about this situation. And I think we need to look, look very closely at that situation. Um, so, you know, I think we do need to move and, and this isn't going back. You need the best person for it. Um, I think he is, he, he's familiar with the elected officials. He's familiar with the grants in the city. He's familiar with all of that. So um, you know, um. Now, I mean, we can move, I mean, the council's gonna make a decision on what they're gonna do, but I think you need to take into, take into account all the information and not just what you're being told. Some factual information, but I'll get to that later. All right, thanks.
Thank you. I have a, a quick question before I go to Councilwoman uh Farid. Um, so, it's habit of, so Mr. Tobias sent us this contract or did we draw up this contract?
I sent him a, a copy of, of what had previously been uh written. And he may have changed it a little bit, but uh, you know, the, he adopted the format for sure.
Okay, and the um, the fee, did he send a proposal with this fee or how was that constructed?
No, he did not send a proposal with it. He uh, 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 was made aware by me of what we had been paying. Uh, and I had uh said to him, you know, what, what did uh he uh want to submit? And so it came in the form of his contract.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farid?
Yes, thank you. I would just um like to, I still don't have an answer. I heard that what Ms. Habata said as, you know, it was fine, but. Um, I wanna go back to the point that Councilman Herring was making around um us not knowing what was happening. And I think that's the most important point for me is we need clarity over who this person would report to. I don't know if we need to write it somewhere, um, because it could be anybody. I'm not really speaking about the person in the role. But really the role itself, because I think, you know, the fact of the matter is we did not know what this role was doing. Until we were informed that this person was gonna be separated. Um, so I think it's important for us to know what they're doing. Maybe there is a report or something. Um, regardless of who is in the role, because the grants that are written for the city should be based on. And aligned with the initiatives that are coming forth through our resolutions. Um, so I think that's really key and I don't know. Uh, obviously, I mean, I think there's good work that was being done for the police department, but I don't think we should have a grant writer that is exclusive to the police department. Or exclusive to any particular department. So I think we need to, you know, before I can get comfortable with saying that the current grant writer should stay on or. Come, going with a new one, I need to be comfortable around how we're going to have uh communication. How is our strategy gonna be communicated to that grant writer? How is that grant writer going to demonstrate to us that they are writing grants that are aligned with those resolutions? And, and how are we going to get updated on that? Is that gonna be in someone's report? Is that gonna be a separate report? I would like clarification on those um, that organizational structure um before moving forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harry, then I'll.
Yes, let me say, and, and I wanna follow up on what Councilwoman um Farid said. Historically, the grant writer has always reported to the council. The grant writer would sit with the council and we would discuss what we want, what we need and what they need to look for in grants. Um, and it, and it fell in line, as she was mentioning, with the um vision of the council, which way we felt the city needed to go. And that's what we will work towards. So I just wanted to put that out there. This is the first time ever a grant writer was under one department. Never had that before, ever. All right, thanks.
Okay. Um, Chief, I, I see your hand is.
Yes. Yes, the one makes the clarifications. Um. Um, grant writer, John O'Connor wasn't reporting to me. Um, so I just wanna clarify that. I don't know what that information came from. Um, any writing grants, um, met with me. met with me in Beverly and whatever grants that she approved, she knew about all the grants that was coming through. So it wasn't like John was going out there and just writing grants to be writing them. Um we met with her and she gave him a lot of information through uh meetings we had and emails about what grants to follow up on and what grants to do. He knew a lot of police grants that he was working on. He was already working on other jurisdictions. So that's why he was familiar with the police branch, but tree grants and all the other type of grants. Um he cannot work on a grant without getting authorization from the city manager and the city manager is aware of all the grants he was working on. So that information about him reporting to me is totally false. So I don't know where that information came from. And I'm pretty sure the city manager can clarify that, that he was not reporting to me. He kept me informed of what's going on with the grants um as relating to the police department, but the city manager, he always kept in touch with me and the city manager about what's going on. And she told me exactly what grants she wanted him to work on and so forth. So I just wanted to clarify that because that misinformation is totally wrong. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So it 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 looks like I'm wrong, we're moving towards a structure that historically was in place. Um is what I'm hearing from Councilmember Herring and Councilmember Faree. Uh and I'm I'm taking it that it's gonna be, the communication is gonna be directly to us and I guess and the city, not city manager, council clerk? I mean, it's a work session. Okay. Um all right, so is there anyone opposed to that structure? Any council member opposed to that structure? Okay, so I'm hearing none. I'll take that as unanimous consent, but that's the structure uh that should be in place. So if that's the structure that should be in place, then we have to come to a determination on where do we go from here. And before we go there, I just want to uh go to Councilwoman Faree. Um is your question satisfied? The answer to your question satisfied?
Um yes, and so I I just wanna add that I expect then that the um whoever is in that role will sit with the council, will lay out what our priorities are. They will give us regular reporting on what grants are available and which ones they think we should apply to. That will be done from the grant person to the council.
Okay. All right, so we, we've settled that step. Now we're moving on to who is our grant writer? That's the next discussion. So currently, um we have uh Mr. John O'Connor on an expiring contract within ninety days. Um and we have a proposal for Mr. uh Tobias um that the city manager has presented. And so now that it's on the table, where do we go from here? I do not know if we, I don't I don't think there's anything um in this discussion that should be hashed out in a closed session. Uh if it gets to that point, then I will stop it and recommend that we go in closed session, but until then, I think that this is a open session discussion unless there's a disagreement from a council member, a valid disagreement from a council member. All right, I haven't heard none. Then that's on the table.
Uh Mr. President, may I say, um the advice that was given to us from the attorney, should we be discussing this in open session? As we're talking contracts?
You, I'm sorry, say it again?
You know, on the invite, remember the advice that we got from the attorney?
Yes.
Should we be discussing it? Are we gonna open ourselves up to?
No, I no, I don't think we should discuss that in open session, no.
No, not that, but just discussing it in general, you know, you never know if somebody's
Oh.
You know, I'm just, I'm just trying, I mean, whatever the council wants to do. I mean, I'm 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 fine with that. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to avoid a situation because you know how some people can be.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you're saying, I guess you're saying. Um Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I'm concerned. What was discussed with the attorney?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't discuss, I wouldn't discuss that in open session. So it looks like that this conversation would require us to go into closed session. So then we'll just table this part of the discussion uh for closed session.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Harry, a valid point. Um since we're tabling that for closer session, for closed session, next up is a resolution to authorize the purchase of equipment, software and licensing for body cameras as per Police Accountability Act of twenty twenty-one from Axon Enterprises. Are there any questions from council members on this piece of legislation?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harry?
Yeah, I just wanna know, is this replacing the existing body cameras that we had? Because I know they had them before. So these are new? Replacing the existing ones we had?
Yeah, sure. It's updated version. Um with um with tasers and body worn cameras and stuff, they update them. Uh cuz we go through a contract, like three year, four year contract. And so when they get the new ones in, um we we go into the new, the latest version. Um he was gonna do a presentation tonight, but we overbooked, uh so he'd be here next week um to give that presentation to show the differences in the cameras and how we can actually access them from wherever we are um to check on our officers and make sure they're safe.
Council President?
Uh yes.
May I, if um, you know, I was assisting with uh getting this legislation forward and my understanding is that it's the software, not the actual physical camera. I just wanted to make sure the council, if that was correct. So the council could be aware of it's not the new. I think that the new body cameras come along with it, but the the money that's being spent is actually the licensing and the software. Perhaps Chief could expand on that, found on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. President, may I?
Yes, Councilman Mary?
And we need to clean up the resolution because the resolution saying we're purchasing twenty-two body worn cameras. But if it's just for the licenses, licenses and accessories, then we need to specify that because it looks, it looks like we're buying twenty-two new cameras. And we just update twenty-two new cameras.
Well, what it is, is that we getting other cameras, we getting other cameras in. Um they pretty much the same cameras we had before, so we're gonna be getting the new cameras and trading other ones in. So we get new cameras. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are getting new cameras. Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, have any other questions from council? All right. Hearing none, we can want to uh
Get it started.
Well, Chief, all right. We can hear everything in your background. But I think we're good to go.
All right.
All right, but um all right. Next up are uh administrative reports. Any questions at this time or people holding it for the regular session? Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I do have one question for code enforcement. Um since the weather has changed, not that the weather, but the, we have more daylight at night. I'm wondering if uh, since you do have three uh full-time code enforcements uh personnel, uh if the hours are gonna be staggered to meet the need, uh like maybe, I'm thinking maybe a twelve to eight shift for one officer, maybe a Tuesday through Saturday for another officer, so they can catch some of that Saturday stuff. And then the other officer would just work eight thirty to five.
Thank you for the question, uh Councilwoman Jones. Uh yes, the schedule um is being discussed and I'm working with my team uh so we can figure out the best hours to get the most coverage um for the citizens.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Faree?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question for um the mayor and her report. I don't see anything in the report regarding the Board of Elections. And I wanted to know where we are with that. The Board of Elections is supposed to be um identified the February prior to the year of the election, so that would have been the February of this year. Um I don't know that a call has been put out to um solicit participants for the Board of Elections or or what the current status is, but we need to make sure that we have that happening.
Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President, and hello, everyone. Um so the call has to be made the August before the incoming election year, which means we will make that call uh closer to the summer because August is the timeframe and then those persons that will be uh selected uh by the mayor and presented to the council will be in the coming year on that January. And so that January is the timeframe in accordance to the charter and we'll pull that charter regulation up, so you'll have it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't know if perhaps there's another version. Um it says there shall be a board of elections consisting of ten members who shall be appointed by the mayor on or before the first Monday in February in the year preceding the election. I don't know where August is coming from. So I'm 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 happy to review what the mayor has and is referencing.
Mayor Cross, do you, are, which, what are you referencing?
So that was on the charter that was already available for the citizens. But I am pulling that up right now. If you wanna move to something else or while I take a look for it and I can get rid of the exact quote on it.
Uh Councilmember uh Faree, what section are you quoting?
Sorry, and I just closed it too because I went, I'm now on the city's website trying to open up that version to make sure that the, I was looking at the red line version um that we've been using for the Review Committee. Um it's it's uh section seven oh one. There shall be a board of elections consisting of ten members who shall be appointed by the mayor with their approval of the council on or before the first Monday in February of the year immediately preceding a regular city election. I can share it. This is straight off of the city's website. But I don't know if I have sharing abilities. This is on Ecode. I do, okay, let me.
Council President?
Yes.
I gave credit to share if if Councilwoman Faree so chooses.
Right here in section seven oh one.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Faree.
Thank you.
Uh so Mayor Cross, I take it that given that you thought it was in August that there isn't currently a plan in place?
Well, I have a plan in place, but we can execute it. No problem at all. Now, let me, I'm, my computer here is I wanna pull that up as well.
Sorry, Mayor Cross, are you pulling something up?
Yeah.
Is it the plan?
All right, so I see it here. And yes, we we do have an opportunity to move forward. Um let's see here. Okay, so honestly, we need to um set a meeting with the mayor and the council relative to this particular piece. Because of so much different changes, I need to know how we're gonna move forward. Particularly as it pertains to uh how this particular board will actually uh qualify voters, uh how this particular board will actually move, whether you're moving to a mayor, city council or are we still doing a, our city council, city manager? You know, it's really unclear as to what um the the council is doing in that particular role. So relative to the Board of Elections, I think we need to have a real you know, qualified charter. Um and it's changing so drastically over the few uh years that we've been serving together. So we need to understand what exactly is this charter, what exactly is this registration of voters going to be hosting as far as the Board of Elections? And relative to that, um it it, I mean, honestly, we just need to get a a understanding because the Board of Elections have to, in accordance to uh section seven oh two voters um line item D, the Board of Elections shall maintain a supplement voting list of personnel who register to vote in the city. Now, the problem is, where are you voting? Because we've had discussions on the last meeting on whether you were moving from one, one, one and four to two, two, two and then um you know, a spare. So we're not quite sure what the council's doing relative to how this board will actually be looking at the population. Uh on the last election, it was one person per ward and then four at large. I did, I need a lot of questions answered um based on how the charter has been manipulated, particularly over the last year. So putting a board in place is hard for anyone to even be ready to support. Has the council made some clarity on where they wanted to go?
Oh, well, I don't, I'll now go to the council if you see your hand, but I don't think that has anything I think it has much to do with an election, but I I I reserve my comment. Uh uh, Councilwoman Faree?
Um yes, Council President, that has zero to do with the composition of the Board of Elections. The charter is as it is currently, if there are amendments to the charter that pass then um related to the structure of the government, that 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 will only impact the Board of Elections in terms of the call for um nominations and what's on the ballot, and that is not going to be determined as of today. What we need are members to be on that Board of Elections to ensure that the registration of voters is made available or rather the uh the reger- the register of voters is available. Um and making sure that they are beginning to get the necessary infrastructure in place to be able to hold an election. Who is going to be on the ballot, what uh offices are going to be able to be voted for are irrelevant for selecting the board offices are going to be able to be voted for are irrelevant for selecting the Board of Elections today. Um, it is clear from the charter how many people need to be on the Board of Elections, when they need to run in their term. It is not conditional at all upon the composition of the council or the composition, the structure of the government. It has nothing to do with that at all. Um, the only thing is that any of these board members will not be able to run for um office and simultaneously hold their position as board members. So that is to say that anyone who is determined to be a board member in twenty twenty four, if they choose to run for election come twenty twenty five, they would need to resign their positions. But again, that has nothing to do with um identifying the ten members that need to be on the Board of Elections.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Cross, I see your your hand.
All right, super. Uh, ten members identified and they will be available for the council. Uh, do you want them on the next meeting, or do you want to hold a special session?
Um, well, you just have to present it. I don't think we need another meeting to review it. I I would take it that um these people will be uh appointed by, or confirmed, I guess, by resolution, so um, we're already behind the eight ball as it relates to the timing. Uh, but it looks like it will be probably by the May um work session to give it, to be able to be presented in a work session, public hearing and uh a regular session. Okay, any other questions? Uh, Vice President Ferguson, I saw your hand, uh. Yes, Vice President Ferguson? We can't hear you, you're muted.
Sorry, I said, I I um pretty much uh Councilwoman Fareed had stated a lot of what I was going to say on that issue. However, I do have um statements and possible questions concerning uh the first uh entry of the mayor's uh monthly report where um she's speaking about the uh her opposition to the C A R zero one twenty twenty four um charter change. Um. You know, we do know that she's opposing it, and she's in her right to oppose it. However, there's many things in that particular paragraph that is not true. We've gone over it um time and time again. Um, again, the um, it states in the charter that checks, all checks issued in payment of salaries or other municipal obligations shall be issued and signed by the treasurer, comma, mayor, comma, and a council member selected by the council. Now, that is what um we have done. But in addition to that, um, we have some alternates which are, uh, we have two alternates. But the charter requires three offices of pe- people that's holding an office, which I read. And so to put in this uh um your report, mayor, that is um false statements being made. And yes, um, you did make a true statement saying that there are three cit- uh uh city council members authorized to sign the check, but that still does not um, take the, take the effect of um the position of honoring the charter. And um, we've gone over that, over that, and I don't understand, even with dealing with the um the treasurer, uh, I mean, the um election board, we left, and we have talked about that before, along with the F S Commission. Um, but um and I don't understand why you do not understand, or appears that you did not understand um, the charter, it spells it out, and um the false reporting and your system on doing that and have, you know, it's it's not good. And so I just wish that you would, um, you are entitled to your opinion. But to just literally cause, you know, saying that we're making false statements and and we are, um, you know, deceiving the citizens and and that we, um, you know, deception, that is not true. And and I mean, even the the citizens, any of the citizens that are on this call, I mean, on this um zone, I have admonished you to read for yourself, because oftentimes, um, you know, those that um are solicited by the mayor, they get in there and then they wind up looking stupid because they are not reading the charter. Now, if I'm out of order, I'm out of order, but the bottom line is this. We should not have to keep going around and round with this. And I would like to say, mayor, because of, you know, it's in the charter. And, and I take pride in the city of Glendale, and Glendale is everywhere. People are calling me from Los Angeles asking me what's going on with this and that, and we should not be drawing negative attention to the city because you decide that you do not want to adhere to the charter. Or, you know, or even if you don't understand, that's all, fine. We, as a council, I have been here, we admonished you uh many times, if you needed some assistance, we would help you, um, or, you know, um, but that hasn't been the case. So again, we are here to help you to understand the charter or to bring it to you offline. They don't even have to be there, but this is ridiculous, because when you do this, um I think just bring more attention, and this stuff is in writing, and this is not true. And I don't know how many times we have to go along with, I'm going around, I'm saying that. And so you, as a mayor, was um, had a, had a duty to do that. Now, it's been taken away as, right now, but you were supposed to do that. And so, um I just, I did, I just wish you would just take it out. Like, you know, we should be able to, you should not be saying that, because it just makes us look stupid. I mean, the calls that I've been receiving is this, is is embarrassing and it's hurtful. Like I said, I've been in this, this um city since nineteen fifty nine, at two years old, and I don't remember the the kind of publicity we're getting um, even today. So I want to admonish you to to take it out, because it's not true. Or to, I mean, you can say that you oppose of it and you and you have your right, but this this wording in it is not true. Thank you.
Vice President, or is that a a question to the mayor?
No questions, you know, I'm not asking her anything. I'm just saying it, because it's, because at this point, I cannot, um I don't see what she can say, because we've gone over and over, even if she she presented this. Even the last meetings that we had, she could have asked to to uh take, to take it out. And so therefore, I don't have the tolerance to hear her, because the the information that she gave, even with the elected, uh, the election board. It was ridiculous. She knows what is supposed to have been, it should have been done, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions related to the um administrative reports? All right, here now, we'll move on to the topics of discussion. First up, uh, is the FY budget discussion schedule for dates and budget review. Uh, from my understanding, and uh you correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Habita, uh, the administration is looking for dates to uh that we're going to take on the budget. Is that correct, Miss Habita?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, in terms of your meetings in May and June, uh, if the if there are instructions to uh put as much as possible into the regular meeting schedule or additional meetings, or uh what's the council's pleasure?
Um, it's my understanding that the the deadline for the budget is April fifteenth, and so, um, we can uh either find time at the end of April or um uh, schedule it in the uh work session for the first week in May. And from there, uh, it'll just be scheduling, because I know that we'll be on a tight deadline to actually get the budget implemented. Um, and so, uh, we'll, you know, discuss it, go over it, and um get fillers for dates that council members are available to uh have work sessions, additional work sessions on it if needed. So April fifteenth is the deadline. Um, once we get uh unless any other council member has any objection, uh, I think having at least a week or two to go over it, or a week to go over it, uh, and then we could schedule something, like I said, at the end of August, August, April, or keep it with a regular session in May. Any opposition from council on that? Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next up is the street and sidewalk analysis for those one, two, and three uh decision on order of street work, review of engineering. Uh, Councilmember Habita, would you like to elaborate?
Um, the memo
City Manager, sorry.
Yes. Uh, the memo that you received outlined uh the uh costs for the three wards, uh, Ward three, two, and one. Uh, we understood uh from previous discussions that council uh had it stated that Ward three had not been uh given much attention. And so therefore identified uh that as a focus for the first survey that was done by Charles P. Johnson, Jr. and Associates, the engineering firm who who have done the uh street study, uh, the sidewalk uh survey, uh, and the stormwater uh survey work. Um, so you have the totals of what uh their survey work has indicated for both um street improvements and sidewalk improvements on the first page of the memo. Um, and and then on the last page uh of the memo, um we made certain assumptions, um, uh, let me back up and say we made certain assumptions that council did not want us to include anything for driveway apron replacements. Uh, there would not be any HOA streets included except for Delwood Court under a previous agreement between the city and and that HOA of Glendarden Towns. Um, we also did not include in the calculation of, in in terms of the recommendations, sidewalk improvements needed for Campus Way and Ruby Lockhart that are in the Ward three list, uh, because we believe those are streets that have not been been turned over to the city or may and be in fact turned over to the county at some point, perhaps, Ruby Lockhart. And someone can clarify that for me if I'm misstating it. Um, so those sidewalk improvements for Campus Way and Ruby Lockhart were not included in Ward three, and the cost uh for Ward three uh is recommended at a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Includes uh allocation of sidewalk work for Bark Off Road, Glendarden Parkway, and Lival Court. Uh, and the second recommendation for street work is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars for curbs, gutters, milling, and overlay for Fifth Street, Tyrol, Jeff Road, Gary Lane, and Gary Court. Uh, and the uh amount for total, uh, the total amount, again, for Ward three is a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two twenty-six. And with the remaining of the funds that are available, uh, to be uh dedicated to um split between the two uh wards, wards one and two. Um, so uh three hundred and sixty-six thousand roughly uh for each ward. Any questions?
Any questions? Oh, sorry, I do see hands. Um, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I looked at the uh proposals and the uh documents sent by uh CPJ, and I'm not in agreement of what what they're trying to do for Ward three. Now, they're saying Ward three has had some work done on it. I think uh streets, uh, First Street, Second Street were paved, and there was some work done down on the cul-de-sac of Fifth Street, if I'm not uh mistaken. But they did Lavelle, they did um Ga- some of Gary. Cousins was never uh got any asphalt. Jeff never got any asphalt, and Tyrol never got any asphalt. Eleventh Street all the way down to Fifth Street didn't get any asphalt. I'm sorry, not Fifth Street, all the way down to Fourth Street, no Third Street. From Third Street to Eleventh Street, those side streets didn't get any asphalt. And then riding around this, the the Ward three, again, looking at what they determined did not need uh to be uh uplifted. Seventh Street, when you, on the, in the fourteen-hundred block of Seventh Street, there's a, a, like a, a hole or something. Uh, uh, it goes down and comes back up. So the asphalt in in those areas, like I said, from Fourth Street all the way to Eleventh Street have not been paved. And then the 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 streets, uh, Tyrol, Jeff, and Cousins have never been paved. And some of uh Gary, uh, I know Gary Court was done, but there's a portion, I think, on Gary that was not done either. So, I mean, citizens have been asking for third step for Ward three to get street improvements where Ward one has gotten street improvements through the city doing it, and then W S S C had a, um, there was an issue over there, and they they reprove, improved them again. Ward two, I understand, they do need, there's some streets in Ward two, um McLean and another street that need to be addressed immediately, but Ward three has still not received the the asphalt paving that the other wards have received. And I think that those those streets need to be repaid before we do anything. Now, I do agree with CPJ on the sidewalks, especially in Ward one. The sidewalks are horrendous in Ward one. Sidewalks, uh, with the, from the pictures that they showed uh where they showed sidewalk work needed to be done, I agree that that sidewalk work needs to be done, and may maybe some ass who is that? And maybe some asphalting. But as far as Ward three, uh, not, you'd want to do three streets, you're going to do Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Tyrol, and Beth. Uh, that's, this is un, that's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, Councilwoman Fare, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. I'm just having a tough time following this memo, um, Miss Habita, because it, at the top, it's talking about total of all the wards is six million, and the one for Ward three is two hundred and seventy-three, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Then on the recommendations, it's saying one eighty-two, two twenty-six. Can you just explain what what is the difference between these? Like, what is the top part, this totaling the six million dollars? Is that, what what is that?
Okay, um, the engineers had had um uh come up with two hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, but they have also noted, and Beth Forrest will be joining us shortly uh from CPJA. They had also noted uh that there was some W S S C work that's going to be done on a couple of these streets, and therefore they don't recommend that we uh go ahead with uh doing work there until, you know, W S S C is responsible for the work that they do and for uh, you know, returning the streets into good condition. Uh, and so that uh was a factor in terms of reducing it from the two seventy-two down to one eighty-two.
Okay, but where, how are we going from six million dollars in the total for the ward? So Ward two being one point three million, Ward one being four point five million, but then down in the recommendations, Ward one and two would only get three sixty-six per ward. I I just, I'm trying to figure out why, if this is what they're saying is needed, how like does Ward one go from needing four point five million dollars in repairs to saying only give them three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars?
Uh, basically, following the recommendation of uh CPJA engineers uh to allocate funds uh based on their needs that they identified as urgent remediation needs. Uh, and then uh, given the fact we only have a a certain amount of money uh that's available that the funds would be, when you deduct out the one eighty-two, one, two twenty-six from the funds we have available, uh, then the the remaining uh amount uh of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven ninety-eight would be split between two wards.
Okay, so it's based off of what's available? Um, when are we going to hear from CPJA? Because I feel like maybe I would better understand it coming from the people who did, who have done it.
Okay, sure. Let me see if Beth has joined us yet.
Yes, I believe Beth has joined us from CPJA. Um. Ms. Habada, I'll let you go ahead and. Hi, Ms. Forbes, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good. Uh, so thank you for joining us tonight, um. If you want to elaborate on the report, uh, and find that you have from, from CPJA, that would be great.
So our report doesn't have these recommendations as Ms. Habada has put together for you? Our report went, first we surveyed the city. Wards one, two, and three for streets and for sidewalks separately. Uh, we recommended things for, for immediate attention that are safety concerns. And so, but we priced out everything by this, the streets and the sidewalks were separate, and each ward was separate. So we didn't make any recommend, we didn't have, except for Ward three streets, we did a little differently. That's the only one that we actually broke out the cost for the emergency work versus the other work. And all the other wards and all the sidewalks, then we just, um, had a total for the, all the repairs that we saw that were needed in that ward for that, whether it was streets or sidewalks. Does it make sense?
Yes, Council, Councilmember Fareed?
Yes, so thank you, Ms. Forbes. So are you saying that what we see in the memo for Ward two and Ward one doesn't necessarily indicate that there are no urgent remediation needs? You just didn't itemize them as you did for Ward three?
Ward three streets is the only one that we separated the cost for emergency repairs from the other costs. All the other ones, we just gave all the cost for that ward. Um, things that we did do that Ms. Habada has, has said that she doesn't think that any fund should be spent on driveway apron replacements. Uh, the bottom line of our cost estimates do have, when we were doing the streets, where we saw that the, the driveway apron was in poor condition.
Okay, so I'm sorry, let me just ask my question a different way. Do Ward one and Ward two have urgent remediation needs?
Yes.
Okay. And how much are they for Ward two and how much are they for Ward three?
For the urgent needs?
Yes.
We didn't break that out.
Okay, but they do have some, so it wouldn't necessarily be fair to say that, um, as it kind of appears here in this memo, that the only ward that has needs urgently are Ward three. We should be allocating money to Ward two and Ward one as well for their urgent needs.
That's a city decision.
Okay. Um, but we would need to get that itemized in order to know whether or not the three sixty-six would be sufficient to address those urgent needs as well as the others. Um, what will we need to have done in order to get that itemization for Ward two and Ward one?
We can be requested to provide that information.
Okay.
So, uh, some of the things that aren't in our report, um, is the WSSC work. So we did, there, there's some WSSC future work that's, that's been, that's under design now. We, for Ward three streets, we, um, we recommended not doing some of the repairs that are necessary for the streets because we knew the WSSC was likely to come in later. We did not do that for Wards one and Wards two. And, uh, what else isn't here? We are now currently asking the county to look at doing some of these repairs if they were, um, probably have a storm drain issue that's causing the street or the sidewalk or the inlet. So there are some things that are on our list that the county might take care of itself.
Councilmember Fareed, does that satisfy your inquiry?
It does, but what is, it's pointed out for me is that I, I feel like we don't have enough detail. And we're not really comparing apples to apples when we're looking at the different wards and what the needs are, if we're to determine which ones we should move forward with first. I would think that we would wanna move forward with areas that have urgent remediation needs for all of the wards. Unless it's certain that there's going to be some other avenue for improvement in those areas. But without that information, I don't know that I would feel comfortable saying, you know, give this ward this amount and this ward that amount. When there might be a, an urgent need that we're not exactly clear on. So I would like to have the report be um, have comparable um, cost estimates between the wards so that we can know what are the urgent needs, what are the non-urgent needs for all of them and can make our decision based upon that clarity.
Urgent needs are, are identified in our reports.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I would also like to see this WSSC report that, that, I mean, where would I find that? Can I go online and find that information? Ms. Forbes?
I don't believe so. I have, um, some, um, Mr. Simpson provided us with some, uh, drawings from WSSC.
Okay, and the storm water, the storm, uh, drain issues from the county, although, did he also provide that information?
The storm drain issues are the things that we saw when we were out in the field. And we're in the process of reporting them to the county using their three-one-one application.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. All right, are there any other questions? Ms. Habada, do you have what you need?
I think the request from Councilmember Fareed probably is, um, one that the other council members agree to, that we should identify the urgent needs in Wards one and two. And we can certainly do that from the, uh, reports that we've received from CPJA. To go, go over those with, uh, staff at CPJA to identify, uh, you know, what they believe are the urgent needs. And we will come up with, uh, uh, a, uh, a, a new, uh, look at Wards one and two in terms of urgent needs.
Okay. And Mayor Cross, I see your hands, uh, do you have a, a specific comment related to the wards, uh, the streets and sidewalk analysis?
Hey, Council President, my hand's been up for a very long time. And, um, really and truly, um, to Councilwoman Ferguson's, uh, issue there.
Well, what, uh, so, Count, uh, Mayor Cross? So we, we've moved on, and so I, I just saw your hand and wanted to know if you had any questions related to the CPJA. And so since you don't, we're going to continue to move on. All right. Thank you, Ms. Forbes, uh, for joining our meeting and for answering our questions. Well, we have some other topics of discussion that were added, uh, Pessola, Councilmember Harry?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to know, um, cause I know I saw the email that went around about Pessola wanting to use that lot over there next to, uh, the beauty shop, in between the beauty shop and the church for staging for two weeks. I guess we just need to find out what's what. I know the Maryland Department of Transportation is also requesting that we use that piece. There'd be a lot of pieces of property if we used just for two weeks in order to put them to paving. I guess they're waiting to see what we're gonna say. City manager? I think we need to know what's what, because I think they're ready, they're ready to move. And I mean, if it's there, we might as well go ahead and let them use it and get it over with. It's only for two weeks. I mean, it's, and the biggest part is being affected with the seven oh four, redevelop, I mean, repaving is, is Glen Arden, so. I just think we need to wait and move.
So we can just do a consensus? Right?
True, yeah, true.
All right, uh, the consensus is to allow Pessola to use the staging area for two weeks. The location is in between the beauty shop and the church on seven oh four. Did I have that correct, uh, City Manager Habada?
Uh, yes, and they thought it might, uh, be, the outside would be three weeks, twenty-one days.
Okay, uh, and, um, there's no cost associated with it outside of if the property is damaged, then they will, would, you know, cover that cost, right?
Yeah, there is a document that they have submitted. Uh, I think council probably saw a, a, a copy of the whole package that I forwarded uh, from the contractor. And, uh, right of entry would need to be signed to say that they agree, that we would agree, and they would agree that any, you know, uh, thing that had to be corrected as a result of their being there on the property that they would take care of. So it, uh, the question, the only other question is who signs that document if it would be the council president? Uh, or, uh, me, or, you know? I'm assuming you want that document signed, you know, for the.
Yes, okay, um. All right, uh, the consensus is to allow, uh, Pessola to use the, uh, staging area. Uh, yes, or no? Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston?
Yes.
Councilmember Guion?
Yes.
Councilmember Fareed?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, city manager, um, I guess consistent with contracts. Uh, you can just have, I'll, I'll come and assign it.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, just look. Yeah, I'll come and sign it. Councilman Harry, is, is that all for Pessola?
Yes.
All right, and you're up next with the police department?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to get some clarification on this stuff. I've been hearing a lot of things going around with the bond bill and all of that. And I'm gonna, um, ask the city manager, where are we at? Where? Do we know how much was actually submitted, finally submitted for Glen Arden in the way of a bond deal?
Uh, it's my understanding it was the two million dollars that was requested, uh, by Senator Benson. Uh, and I, that's all I know in term, in terms of cross filing. It was cross filed in the House, and I don't know the amount for that, for the House bill.
Okay, so we don't know what we're getting?
Uh, not yet, and probably, I'm sorry, uh, if I may answer.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, we probably won't know until after the, the session is over because of what's happened with the bridge and the emergency there and the impact there, um, in terms of the final number.
Okay, um, I guess my, my, the issue I have with this whole police facility thing is, oh, another thing with this police facility, cause I'm, I'm getting, getting conflicting information now. Do we, who, who is? I'm trying to figure out who's working on this, on this, on this project. Again, as a city council, we need to, this is a multimillion dollar project that we're looking at, and we need to be more involved with this project. Um, so far, I know Redstone has submitted a proposal. But you cannot just take a sole source proposal when you're dealing with state money, especially when you talk about millions of dollars. And I think we need to put an RFP out for architects for this police department. Um, that's one thing. Also, um, has, has I'm trying to figure out who's involved in this, cause I, I, I saw an email about Greenwill. Greenwill is a lobbying company. Are they working with the city of Glen Arden?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, now I'm seeing this email, and it says the Greenwill team has been tirelessly working with Senator Benson to secure funding for the police building. Has they, have, have they spoken, has the Senator's office spoken to us about Greenwill, or have they, have Greenwill spoken to the Senator about this project?
Uh, I had a, a conversation with staff there, uh, the time that the email came forward, uh, regarding, um, from the chief to me about what the status was of Greenwill, uh, and Ivan Lanier's in, interest, his contract with the city. And, uh, I have contacted Senator Benson cause the, um, the, uh, email came from, uh, Mr. Lanier saying that he was working on it. Uh, and so I contacted Senator Benson because I know the council has not, uh, taken up any, anything on your sessions about hiring Greenwill. Um, and, uh, when I talked to them, they, uh, to their staff, to her staff, uh, the answer was that, uh, well, they have seen Greenwill in their office about other matters. But not Mr. Lanier, but some folks from his organization, his, 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 uh, his, uh, company. And, uh, nothing has been brought to, uh, Senator Benson about, uh, Greenwill, uh, being a representative from the city and working on the bond bill. Uh, that was the first call. And then the second call I made, they said, well, Senator Benson had just walked in and they asked her uh, to respond if she knew anything about it. And I heard her say, uh, very loudly, uh, and while they had the phone open, no, that he is not working on the, uh, bond bill. Uh, I do know that Mr. Lanier had called into the city clerk, the council clerk, uh, and left a message for, uh, callback to him, uh, and, uh, I think that he finally caught up with the council president Curtis on, on this. Uh, and, you know, in terms of them, uh, being involved in the bond bill, you know, with the city's bond bill through Senator Benson's office.
So, okay, so I'm looking at this email from, uh, John O'Connor. Basically saying that Greenwill team has been working tirelessly on this, on this with Senator Benson, so that wasn't true.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a, an email from John O'Connor, it was an email that came.
I'm looking, I'm looking at this email from John O'Connor.
Oh, okay.
This says that Greenwill team has been tirelessly working with Senator Benson to secure funding for the police building project on behalf of the city. Their dedication and expertise have impressed Senator Benson, who has requested any assistance possible to help expedite and simplify the funding process. So that was not true at all. And I, and, and see, and, and, and that's what, this, this kind of bothered me with this whole process. Cause I know how the bond bill works. We get money because of Senator Benson's reputation and her expertise and her political connections down there, as well as our delegate, I think in this case it was delegate Andrea Harrison. Their, their, their expertise in securing this money and lobbying on behalf of the city. You don't know, normally you don't have people in, it's, it's a seeding on that point. Because again, she says, I'd agree, you did a lot of this with lobby to Senator to, to bring something on behalf of the city. She had already committed to that. So to throw that out there and put this email out there that Greenwill was working on something and they weren't, I think is very, um, very misleading. I, I have a very big problem with that, because I mean, it seems like somebody's trying to get a contract through by saying that they're doing something that they're not, because this email follows through with, you know, we need to sign a contract with Greenwill. Um, and, and council members need to look at that closely. Um, that's a problem, that's a problem. Also, um, it's been told to us that Mr. O'Connor has been working closely with Senator Benson's office to get the bond bill secured. Am I correct?
Um, in terms of emails that I have seen, I, I'm not, I'm not.
I mean, we've been told that, I mean, it's been told that over and over again. That Mr. O'Connor has been working with Senator Benson to get this bond bill, get this bond bill. And has she, has she had, do you know if she had any contact with him, with, uh, Mr. O'Connor?
Well, I did talk to her staff to ask that question about, um, you know, Mr. O'Connor and his, uh, contributions. And, uh, and the response was who? Who, who is, who is that person kind of response? So I don't know that the staff uh, are aware of anybody that has been through that office, uh, in terms of o- other than Greenwell coming in on other issues. Staff from Greenwell, uh, there's been no con- uh, conversation I've had with any of the staff in, in Senator Benson's office that indicated that, um, there's anybody, uh, from the outside working on the city's bond bill. Uh, it's been primarily, um, you know, communication uh, that Senator Benson has with the chairman of the, uh, Senate Budget and Taxation Committee. As well as, um, Mr. Jordan McClung, who's my executive assistant, had contacted, um, uh, you know, the delegates, all four, all three delegates to ask the question of whether they would cross file the bill. And it was, um, it was, uh, a delegate Harrison who volunteered to do that in terms of cross filing. So far as I know, um, Delegate Harrison is the only one that responded, uh, of the three delegates who said that they would, that she would. Uh, cross file the bill.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I know how this, I know how the system works, so I know when we, when somebody's blowing smoke about. Blowing smoke, because again, um. It's bothering me that somebody's being pushed out there who's not doing what they said they were doing, and, and, and a lobbying company is being put out there in the email that they're working for us. And that we should be passed, we should be signing a contract with them because they're working for us on the bond bill and they're not. There's no lobbying firm that's gonna sit there and, and make any senator, that's gonna help any senator or delegate to get a bond bill. Usually they get it on their own strength, their weaknesses, and they. Lobby the other senators on their behalf, and usually their reputation in the senate is what usually pulls it through. And, um, I think it's very misleading. That's why I'm saying that this council has got to get together and we have got to move forward. On, get on this, on this police building. We need to know what's going on, who's being talked to, how the funding is gonna do, what it's gonna look like. Where we're gonna put it. We need to be doing that. You know, and that's our responsibility. This is a multimillion dollar project that we should be sitting on, looking at this, having meetings on this. Seeing what's gonna happen and not having somebody running around saying that they're working on it when they're not, and obviously they're not. You know, and then they're throwing their name out there and saying, okay, I've talked to this senator. Oh, no, you didn't. Like, we're not gonna call a senator to find out. You know, and especially with this Greenwood thing, this really bothers me because it seems like they were just trying to push this contract out there. You know, and Mr. O'Connor is the one that sent this email and he's just basically misled it all the way around. Um, you know, and, and, and like I said, Senator Benson knows who she did and did not talk to. And her staff know who she did and did not talk to, cause they keep her appointments, you know, so that's a problem for me. It is, it's a major problem for me. Again, this is a multimillion dollar contract. We now we're looking at Redstone. We need to put an RFP out to get some other architectural firms up in here. We cannot just sole source a, a multimillion dollar project like this. Um, it's a lot of things that we're not doing that we need to be doing to get this building built. Now, we can do, we, we can get this building built with, in consultation with the chief of police, cause he's the chief of police. But it should be something that we as a, as a council should be moving forward on, not just leaving it to, uh, uh, one person. Because again, I don't see, I'm, I'm not seeing, personally, I don't see anything moving anyway. Honestly, I just see a bunch of, I, I mean, and I'm like, right now, I'm not even prepared to vote on Redstone or anybody else, cause I, I need. Some, some, some gotta be sitting still so we can see where we are. We don't even know how much money we're gonna have, but. We have forty thousand dollars if you need to have RFP out there, RFP put out again. To, to basically get the best dollar, I mean, get the best price for the services that we're trying to win, render, because again, we're using state funds. Bond billman, and I think that's what we need, that's what we need to move forward, and that's what I'm saying with this police facility. We need to pull it in. And get a clear understanding of where we are, clear understanding of funding, clear understanding of, uh, where it's gonna go. Architectural designs, cause nobody can tell me what's going on. I don't care what nobody says, nobody knows what's going on with this building. We, we've just been talking about it, we've been hearing things, but now we're finding out other things, you know. And it seems like everybody's trying to get a contract versus, versus trying to get this building built. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chief, I saw your hand up, but it's, okay, Chief.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, Councilman Harry, totally correct. Um. We need to move forward with this. Um, what I can say about Greenwill is when, um, when Beverly first got there. Uh, we had a meeting and, um, Greenwill, Ivan Lanier. The city manager, I spoke about Ivan Lanier, uh, being our lobbyist, um. Senator Benson had introduced me to Bruce Bariano. And Bruce Bariano was trying to, um, after she introduced me to him at one of her events at the Gold Room. Um, he gave me his number, had breakfast with him, um. One morning, and, um, he was saying that he was a lobbyist. And me and Beverly spoke about it several times, and Beverly stated that, um. Ivan Lanier was our lobbyist, and I told Bruce that on several occasions. And he said, well, he, you know, he a different type of lobbyist and he can come in and help us. It can be more than one lobbyist. So, the whole time, um. Uh, my understanding and from talking to Beverly, um, Ivan Lanier was our lobbyist at that time. Um, back then, we talked about it and she, um, declined to have, um, Bruce Bariano step in. To be our lobbyist, so my last understand that, um, Ivan Lanier, from talking to her, me, her. And, um, from me talking to Ivan Lanier, he was our lobbyist during that time when she first got there. And we declined to have Bruce Bariano come in and be the second lobbyist. Cause at the time, we were supposed to been, um, she stated that we just had needed one lobbyist. And she didn't know if the council will approve of two lobbyists. And so that's the last statement, so. When I, um, saw the email about Greenwell, I was very familiar with Ivan Lanier, what he doing. So, I spoke with him and he said he was lobbying, but he was lobbying on behalf of. Um. Of the senator to get extra funding for the police, um, station. And he wasn't getting paid for it, and he wasn't worried about the pay because he had, he fellow law enforcement and he is a lobbyist. So he said he worked on that behalf. I don't know the extent and the details, but, um, when Beverly first got there, um, we did talk about Ivan Lanier. And him being a lobbyist. In reference to, um, the bond bill, um, John and I. We were at, uh, Senator Benson's, um, two or two coalition meeting last week. And, uh, she had us come up, she talked about the funding, that most likely the money would be approved, um, she didn't give us a, she was saying. Uh, hopefully it'd be three million dollars. And she had us, uh, come up and talk about it, uh, our next steps in reference to it. I just told her, um, briefly that, um, we appreciate her, uh, looking out for the city. She did speak highly of the city council adding a million dollars and also. Uh, to assist with the police building. And I told her our next step was, um, we was planning on, uh, John and I was planning on going, um, to Pennsylvania. To, um, look at a facility that's similar to the one that we have now, and, um. And her statement was, you know, alright Chief, let's get on this, um, we need to be shovel ready. We don't need any hiccups, so that was the last thing. I talked to her and saw her about, cause we've been attending all her, um, two or two coalition meetings, so. She, she know who John is, she, she, uh. She know who he is, um, and I told her what we were doing moving forward, so, um, I don't know if she know him by. By, by working with Greenwill or whoever he may be working with, but I just told her, but her thing was, we need to be shovel ready, like, um. Councilman Harry said, um, we need to move forward. If whatever we need to get done, I know, um, Redstone. Sent an email about, um, moving forward, um, he sent the email. He asked me to get the first step rolling with the questionnaires. I had all the questionnaires sent back, um, I forwarded email to the city manager in reference to him moving forward with his, um. I guess with his contract, whatever, but, um, right now, I'm, I'm a, I'm, I don't know what's going on. But I, I do know that we need to move forward with this, and we need to have meetings and have this thing move forward, especially if the funding comes through. Um, whatever the RFP and whoever we need to get on board, we need to get on. Get, have our meetings, get this thing moving forward, cause, um, Senator Benson, um, and the Senator and myself, we all, um. Put a lot of time into this, um, I know the president, the vice president, the treasurer, myself rode down to Annapolis. Um, met with, um, Senator Benson, so she's very serious about this, and personally, I don't wanna let her down. So I know we're moving forward and we need to get things done, and, um. Like I said, at our meeting last week, we did present, um, on what we tried to do to move forward. But no matter what we do, I don't wanna let her down, and I wanna make sure that, you know, we had the right people in place, um. And, and be shovel ready when the time comes, so hopefully we can move forward and, um, take this thing to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I just, one point of clarification, so, um. I, I do not know Mr. Lanier, um, as city manager Haber said that he called the. Uh, council clerk and asked that I call him back. Uh, I did call him back. Uh, and he said that he know his firm has represented the city of Glendarden. In fact, what happened was, uh, he was in the office. With Senator Benson unrelated to the city of Glendarden, and the senator asked him. To find some money in the budget for the city of Glendarden. It wasn't that he was working on our behalf. He just did it as a favor to Senator Benson, uh, and thankfully, he scouted the budget and was able to find money. Um, that was available for the city, but at, at no point did he rep, did he, um, say that he was representing the city. Or tried to represent the city. That's the extent of the work, um, that he, that he did. Uh, city manager Haber.
Yes, I wanna do one correction, and that is that no time did I tell the chief that Ivan Lanier. Was gonna be hired by the city. Uh, I had, uh. Uh, concerns when the contract came from Mr. Lanier and there was, uh, a lot of, uh, typos in it, uh, and the contract. Uh, was not readable, uh, and I sent it back to him and asked him to correct it. And I never got it back, and so I relayed that to, uh, chief, just, uh, reminded him a couple of weeks ago. So for him to say that, um, that I, uh, you know, was pushing to hire Mr. Lanier, Mr. Lanier dropped off the. The scene when, uh, that contract never came back to me to put in front of the city council. Uh, because there were corrections that needed to be made and they were not made. And so my calls to Senator Benson's office was to inquire, based on the email that I received from the chief. That indicated that Mr. Lanier was waiting to hear from us. About, uh, hiring him and, um. That, uh, information that I responded to basically said that the, um. The contract that had been provided by Mr. Lanier had never been returned to us to, for council's consideration. So I wanted to correct the record on that, uh, on that matter.
Thank you, Councilmember Harry.
Let me say this, I'm gonna tell you right now, I, Ivan Lanier did not find no money for the city of Glendarden. I don't care what he told you, what he said. Senator Benson, through her networking and her, and she got a host that, that system, looked through that budget and found. And, and to see where money is available. So if he told you that, I guarantee you, if you ask Senator Benson, that she's gonna tell you he did not find any money for that. So I think we really need to be careful what we're saying, because they were, our elected officials were diligently. They go through the budget, they comb the budget, they find it, they talk to other representatives, they know what's available, they talk, I mean, she got a pipeline to the governor. You know, what does she need Ivan Lanier to tell her what's available in the budget for? You know, so I guarantee you that, that did not happen, um. Just like this email here where we got from Mr. O'Connor talking about they're working tirelessly for us to get us grant money, get us funding, secure funding. I guarantee you that did not happen. Um, there's no reason for. Any senator in the state of Maryland or delegate to sit there and have a lobbyist lobby on their behalf with their colleagues to get money for a project. When they sitting there looking at the budget as the budget is being developed, and they're gonna, they're gonna a- approve a budget, so. I just think we need to put that out there and give credit where it's due. It was all Senator Benson and, and, and. And, and, and delegate Harrison who introduced the legislation. They know if the money is there and they're gonna lobby for. Um, lobby their colleagues for that money and speak to the people that they need to speak to to get that money, so, I mean, I just don't, I'm not taking nothing. I'm not gonna take nothing away from Senator Benson and the hard work that she's done for the city of Glendarden, and I'm not gonna put it in nobody else's lap. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Harry, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, yes, I'd like to clarify, I'd bring, bring this, uh, point to this discussion, this. Mr. Lanier and Mr. Marino, as well as GS Proctor and. Probably any other, uh, of the, that nature are lobbyists. Mr. Marino. Is, has been a lobbyist for the state of Maryland for a very long time. He is a, uh, family friend. So, I know that the work that he does, they're all lobbyists. They, they lobby for, uh, whatever. Senator or whatever, uh, delegate that wants their, their services, and that's why they're in Annapolis. And that's what they do, they're lobbyists, just like the lobbyists on Capitol Hill. If, uh, a, a senator or congressman wants somebody to lobby for them, I went to a, uh, a, a, a thousand dollar plate. Uh, uh, dinner for Glenn Ivy, and the whole room was filled with nothing but lobbyists. GS Proctor was there as the lobbyist, so these people are lobbyists, they lobby for these senators, these delegates. You know, and they help, they aid them. If Senator Benson went to him and asked him to do something for her, you know. And he knows Senator Benson from over the years, I'm sure you've seen Mr. Marino, he was at Tommy Broadwater's, uh, affair. A, a, a elderly, uh, uh, white gentleman, it was there. Um, he's been doing that for years, so, I mean, if they go to them and ask, and, and Senator Benson knows Mr. Marino. The reason, how I met Mr. Marino was through Senator Benson knowing my sister, Danny Jones Dorsey, and she inter- introduced us all to Mr. Marino. So we've known him for years. He's a lobbyist, he works in Annapolis. Mr. Lanier is a lobbyist, he works in Annapolis, and there's so many others. So, I mean, to sit here and say that these people don't do this for those, uh, these, uh, elected officials at that level, yes, they do. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, alright, um. Yeah, Chief, is that an old hand? Cause here's, here's what I, I want to avoid.
No, no.
Because I, one second, one second. Yeah, I, everybody has the right to their own opinion, and it's great, I just wanna move forward with the conversation and not circle the wagon. So if you have something new to add, Chief, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harry. Alright.
Uh, real quick, um, just wanna clarify, um, city manager, um, if, if I said that you hired him. Um, I'm, I'm incorrect about that, you did not hire him. I'm just saying that you were aware, you and I both were aware that he was, um. That we, that he's lobbying for the city at the time when you first came on. So I'm just clarifying that, so I didn't, if I said you hired him, no, you didn't hire him. I did remember you telling me he sent the contract in. Uh, with a bunch of typos and he never got it back, so that is correct. So, I didn't say, um, if I said you hire him, um, I'd take that back, but we were both aware that he was, um. A lobbyist, a potential lobbyist for the city at that time when you first came in, so just wanna clarify that. And, um, like Councilman Harry said, we, we need to move forward and, uh, get this thing rolling, and at the end of the day, I don't wanna disappoint the senator. I'm very serious about this, so let's do what we have to do and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Chief Bryant. Last comment to you, Councilmember Harry.
Yeah, and just to be clear, you know, I hate when, you know, people speaking, they don't know what they're talking about. Lobbyists lobby on behalf of their client. They'll lobby the elected official. Elected officials don't hire lobbyists, that's against them. So just to put that out there, so all of that, that was just saying, was just. A moot point. They lobby on behalf of their client, they'll go and lobby at an elected official to try to get them to support something that their client want. But they, uh, elected officials do not have lobbyists that work for them, so. That's just wanna get that through there, just so everybody understands clearly what's being, how it actually works and not how somebody wants it, wanna believe it does. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fareed, um, traffic at Woodmore.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um. As, uh, many of us attended a town hall meeting back in January that was hosted by. Um, Councilwoman Ivy related to, um. Alta Woodmore, the new housing development coming. To, uh, Woodmore Town Center. Um, there was a lot of comment from the citizens around concerns related to traffic. And so as a city, we took the initiative to, um, proactively reach out to Wood Partners. Who owns Alta Woodmore as well as Urban Edge, who owns Woodmore Town Center. To begin a conversation with them about how we address these traffic issues collaboratively and making sure the voice of the customer. Is being heard, and, um, we have a public hearing coming up on April twenty second. In which, uh, the parties will be presenting, um. Plans for how the traffic issues will be addressed. Um, so that the citizens can have an opportunity to review that, provide comments. And have, um, a voice in how these issues are being addressed. This will be a first. Um, in a series of conversations that we hope to have with these partners as it relates to the community concerns, um, traffic being the primary one. But, um, we will be looking to address some of the other concerns as well in subsequent meetings like, um. The strain on resources at our public schools, et cetera. Um, but that meeting is scheduled for April twenty second, and we will have representatives from Wood Partners as well as. Um, representatives from Urban Edge.
Thank you. Um, you're next up with the data center.
Yes, um, I wanted to follow up, we had the, the presentation, which was very helpful from the data center representative. And we did talk in that meeting about them coming back, um, or at least providing some information for. The citizens that was in a more consumable format, so that people can understand what's the purpose of data centers. How will this be a benefit to our community? And also I think we need to address some of the environmental questions that arise with data centers. Um, there was a challenge to the governor's. Um, proposal around data centers from, um, a large. Environmental organization. They have since dropped their opposition, but I do think that it's important for people to be clear on what. Those concerns are and if there are any, any actions that need to be in place to mitigate any potential concerns. What this data center operator plans to do to address those. I think that's important for the community to understand and for us to understand as a council. So I don't know, I don't know who was kind of coordinating that conversation with the data center, but if we could get. The gentleman back to discuss that in a public hearing. I think that is something that would be of interest to the community.
Yeah, uh, city manager Haber.
Yes, uh, one question, uh, Councilmember Fareed, did you have a, uh. Timeframe in mind for, uh, data center folks to come back in front of the council? Or in, in a community meeting or how would you, uh, how did you want to frame this?
I would definitely want them to come before the community before. They move forward with building anything. So I don't really know what the timeline is. Um, so I would leave that to you if you were the one coordinating with them, understanding kind of the timeline of the project to make. The best guess or at least come back to us with when would be an appropriate timeframe. I don't know that it's, that it, I don't know how soon the data center is coming, if it's something that we need to address. In the next couple of months, or if this is something that can wait to our summer recess and we come back in the fall. I don't know.
Okay, I, I can get the timeline for the planning process. They've gone through, uh, and gotten the subdivision approved and the next phase will be site plan. And then after the site plan is approved, then they can proceed with construction. So we're a ways away from that, but I can get the definite, um, timeline from them on what, uh, from their attorney, Chris Hatcher. To ask the question, uh, about timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um.
President.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Harry.
I was gonna ask Councilman Fareed. So you're not having. The learner group in the discussion about traffic? Because since they are actually doing a new development, they can put, the, the planning board can put a lot of this, um. Traffic mitigation requirements on them since they're doing the building. And they're going to add to it, um. Because I think like, like I said, the two or two interchange is going to be a major concern as well as the new apartment building that they're going to put up there. So that's going to grow even more traffic into Woodmore Town Center. But also is that, is that meeting on the 22nd going to be only virtual or is it going to be in person and virtual?
In person and virtual.
Okay, they need to change that. I think I saw, I think I saw, I noticed why they said virtual.
Okay.
You may want to look at that. But I think we do need to have a conversation because even, um, the data center say, you know, we really need to be looking at, um. Traffic mitigation, um, anything that we feel that they need, they need to include in the streets and sidewalks and, you know, anytime traffic mitigation. Uh, requirements that we may want, we need to bring it to them before they get to this whole process. And, um. Uh, I'm not sure what the city manager said, we, what, where we were at in the process, but I think we need to look at that also. To help relieve some of the traffic on this end. Cause I know we're going to have an issue on some of the products and roles in Glen Arden.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you.
All right, um, so with that. Um. Do we want to adjourn to any opposition to adjourn to closed session? To discuss the earlier point with grant writers? Hearing none, um. So the council reserves the right to go into closed session anytime during a public meeting pursuant to annotated code of Maryland. State government article 10 dash 508, the council by majority vote may retire to executive or closed session at any time during the meeting. Should the council retire to executive closed session, the chair will announce the reasons and a report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing. The reasons for such closed session. Uh, and I am making a motion to go into closed session to discuss. Um, uh, our grant writer that has legal, uh, that is. Attached to legal, uh, implications. So with that, I motion. Uh, that we go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, council clerk could do the. Roll call for this vote, please.
Roll call for a concession? I'm sorry, uh.
For a closed session.
No, I meant consensus since it's a work session. But okay, Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And Council President.
Yes.
Vote carries.
Thank you. At this time, the open portion of our meeting is now closed. The time is nine twenty-one. Thank you for citizens who came out and see you at the public hearing next week.